I had the best interaction with 2024.
I wish we would have their names. I wish we would have their names.
We just had a big hand for the graduation this last weekend. So we always do. We need that. So probably in the hub, in the back warehouse. And graduation, we need to be all right this year. We had been to the state house, but we met several standing room last year. They were big indoor, the long space, the biggest space. So that is what it was. We had five, well, walking, we had about four hundred. Yeah, total graduate. It's like five, seven, eight, six. So. It's a big.
That's pretty close.
Yeah, it's a good, yeah, it's a good. Yeah, they just keep.
That's the reason.
Yeah, yeah. Hence, hence the reason for our attendance today.
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of my school. Last year, last year, my first work, I mean, at some point in time, it's going to level out. I'm going to find a new sphere.
You have to be a new thing.
Yeah.
The second one.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
You almost need it.
You almost need it. You should have created a team.
Good.
Edie's account is not letting me.
You have to be a new thing. Into the second one.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
You almost need it.
You almost need it. You should have created a team.
Good.
Hey, good morning. The May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Charter Authorization Panel is called to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Arkansas Department of Education Auditorium and ask that you please silence all of your electronic devices. The goal is to facilitate a fear, a fear, fair. Hopefully, there's no fear and responsible hearing. It's almost a weekend. Okay, responsible hearing. So I ask that each person speaking, please state your name and title each time you speak into the microphone for the record. I ask that you continue to speak clearly in the microphone throughout your presentation for the benefit of the panel, the audience and viewing audience. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded, and a transcript of the meeting will be posted on the DESI website. So again, good morning to everyone, good morning to our panel members. We do have presenters joining us today in person, which we are glad to see. And then we also have several panel members that are joining us online. Dr. Bacon and Dr. Brashears. So are they both online at this point? I can't see. Perfect, they're there. And then Ms. Stewart is here with me in the auditorium. And so before we go forward, I just wanted to say that I want to thank Mr. Scott for providing me a copy of the cap policies and procedures. After our last meeting, I kind of went through a whole list of community agreements, and I shared them with the cap office of how I felt like it would be helpful for us all to kind of agree to move forward. And then Freddie shared with me that, oh, we already have these wonderful policies and procedures, which I was giving him a hard time. I said, would it be nice to have it on day one, but you know, I got it on this day, but I got it. So, perfect. So I did ask if he would not mind sharing that with all of the panel members so that we could have that information going forward and know how we all need to operate. And so with that, Dr. Bacon, I know you felt like I gave you a hard time at the last meeting, but if you want to ask twenty-five million questions, you are more than welcome. And I encourage you to do so because we always love to hear from you. Okay, all right, good, good. Okay, so with that, let's move on to our consent agenda. So hopefully, we've all had an opportunity to look at that from April seventeenth as well as the minutes. There were a part of that was the voluntary recensions of two school district conversion charter schools. Can I speak today? Are there any revisions to the minutes concerned on the district charter school recisions? Or do I have a motion to approve? So any questions, comments, corrections, edits, amendments to any of that? And if not.
Dr. Duncan, I, I move to, to approve the minutes.
Second. Okay, so I have a motion by Dr. Brashears Duncan and a second by Ms. Stewart. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes, have it, motion passes. Okay, so next we'll have Ms. Brown come forward, and would you like to come forward and please provide an overview of the procedures for today regards to our action items? And this is your first one with us?
It is.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You are not going to be tough.
I appreciate it. So, good morning, everyone. My name is Labria Brown. I'm a staff attorney with the department, and I'll be speaking about the general operating procedures. So as far as the consent agenda goes, items not likely to need discussion and that are non-controversial may be placed on the consent agenda. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the action agenda at the request of any panel member. As far as the action agenda, all persons, with the exception of attorneys representing the parties who plan to provide testimony during the hearing, must be sworn by the chair of the panel. The charter school or applicant will have twenty minutes to present its case to the panel for approval of the proposed charter school application, renewal, or request. The chair may grant additional time if necessary. Parties opposed to the charter school's application, renewal, or request will have twenty minutes to present its case to the authorizer. This is the total amount of time allotted for the presentation regarding opposition to the application, renewal, or request. The chair of the panel may grant additional time if necessary. The charter school or applicant shall have five minutes to respond to any arguments and oppositions to the charter school application, renewal, or request. The chair of the panel may grant additional time if necessary. The authorizer will follow the presentation or presentations with discussion of the public charter school application, renewal, or request, and questions, if any, to the open enrollment public charter school or applicant opposing parties or both. Additionally, an affected school district may submit written comments concerning the application to the authorizer to be considered at the time of the authorizer's review of the application. Thank you.
Okay, so again, thank you for going over the procedures for today. So next on our agenda is our first and only action item that we have. It's the amendment request of open enrollment public charter Arkansas Virtual Academy to increase their enrollment cap from five thousand five hundred to seven thousand. And so I think Mr. Wood is going to cover that for us. So if you would please come forward and kind of give us an overview or a little bit more detail on that request.
Thank you, Dr. McMurray. Yes, Arkansas Virtual Academy currently serves about fifty-three hundred students. They have an enrollment cap of five thousand five hundred, and they are seeking to have that increased to seven thousand.
So if, before we get started, all of those that are giving testimony today on behalf of Arkansas Virtual Academy, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony or statement you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, very good. Then you maybe give your presentation.
Amy Johnson, Executive Director of Arkansas Virtual Academy. Good morning. I promise I'm not going to take twenty minutes as the only action agenda item today, but did want to give you some background on the school. I know that we have several new charter panel members and may or may not be quite as familiar with ARVA. And it's also very hard for me not to take just a minute to brag on the good work that's happening at ARVA. So as we start our time together this morning, just a quick little history. ARVA actually began in two thousand and three. And I always like to share that because I run into people all the time that say, oh, you must be a byproduct of COVID. We started as a pilot grant to figure out back in two thousand and three if education could even happen virtually. So back in that time period, most of you probably remember the vast majority of the world was still in dial-up, and it was hard to imagine that we could do all the things that we're doing now. But we became an open enrollment charter K eight in two thousand and seven, and that's when we switched to Arkansas Virtual Academy. And then we added grades nine to twelve in two thousand and fourteen with our first graduating class in two thousand and seventeen. So we've celebrated our twentieth anniversary and have moved on past that with lots of excellent work. Currently, we have five thousand three hundred and one students, and our free reduced lunch rate is fifty-seven percent, sped rate is sixteen percent. I like to share that because one of the questions that I often get about our school is what kind of students do you serve? And I like to share with people that we are a cross-section of every district in the state of Arkansas. Those five thousand three hundred students reside in all seventy-five counties. We have students enrolled from every single county. So all the, all the students that you see in a typical school district, there's probably a similar student in our district, whether that's students that have, you know, been very successful in school, all the way down to students that have had more difficulties and more struggles. We're really proud of our CTE program. We have a hundred percent of our students participating in pathways from grade six to twelve. And our goal long term is to move that down even into the elementary to start to think about career exploration. Our goal is that our school wouldn't just be this sort of thirteen-year ride of passage where students have to go and sit and wait to start their life, but they actually start to make the connection between their education and what they will do as an adult. And then we also, I always like to highlight that all of our teachers are Arkansas certified teachers. I think that's another misnomer that happens a lot of times, especially with virtual, and it's really important for us to make sure that we have highly qualified staff. There's been many days that I've appeared in front of this panel that the academics conversation has always happened. I've never shied away from that, but there's been lots of days that have been more difficult to share this information than today. So I couldn't help but add this slide in as we talk about our cap increase. You can see our elementary in twenty-two, twenty-three was an F. Our simulated grade from last year moved and increased two letter grades to a C with an increase in that reading growth of just over eight percent, which is a pretty big jump for growth. Our middle school was a D, and it improved two letter grades to a B, and we were actually in the eighty-second percentile for growth in the state. It's great that the middle school showed that much growth. It's a great opportunity to be able to scale down and scale up some of the things that we're doing in the middle school because they're applicable both directions. And then in the high school, we were a D and increased by one letter grade to a C. And while that growth is in the fiftieth percentile for the state, not as high as we want, we're certainly moving our way the right direction as far as growth. In reading, we had been under state support. We had about forty-two percent of our students that were in the lowest level of reading proficiency. We improved that by eight percent and were released from that state support. Our standards for accreditation, SNP, is there. We're very big fans of Green, so we work really hard to make sure that that's all tidy. And then probably one of my favorite pieces is in the lower right-hand corner. If you're familiar with Capturing Kids' Hearts, it's a national program that helps schools build relationships and self-efficacy in students. And we have been a national showcase school for the last two years with this program. One of the questions I get when I share academics is, well, okay, so how are you doing that? We've really made some shifts in our instructional model. Our primary focus has been on increasing teacher efficacy. We've done a great deal of work with Visible Learning and John Hattie's organization. And we started this ongoing training by making sure that our administrative team, myself included, was trained annually on visible learning and these research-backed processes and procedures. We continue that with our administrative team. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we introduced teacher clarity, which is a process that helps teachers with their pedagogy in the classroom, looking at things like learning intentions and success criteria and having conversations with students about their mastery and their understanding and what is, why it's important to learn those concepts. And then we built on that by adding Visible Learning's PLC Plus this last year, where now that we have increased teacher efficacy, we want to create those communities where they can have conversations and compare practices, identify the most powerful impacts for their students. And then this next year, we'll do the core visible learning training where teachers are really getting into those pieces that have the most impact on student outcomes. All of this training has led us to something that I think is pretty unique, likely for schools across the state, but certainly for virtual, and that's biweekly impact meetings. So our principals actually meet one-on-one with our teachers every other week. And in those meetings, they're talking about what they're seeing and observations, what their student mastery looks like. How did you get to that level of student mastery, or how do we increase that mastery? What are you going to change about your practice? Resoundedly, in our end-of-year feedback, our teachers have said, please keep our impact meetings. It's been the best conversation and the best feedback that we have in order to hone our craft. And that's bolstered by a rigorous observation cycle. Our teachers actually are observed. Again, people are always surprised to hear that we observe teachers in the virtual classroom, but our teachers are actually observed twice a month. And that data and that insight and transparency into our classroom, I think, has really helped increase our growth and our achievement in our classrooms. We do monthly progress monitoring of our standards, so we know every month exactly where our students are, what standards they've mastered and what they haven't. Part of our reading proficiency has been a very strong partnership with APSRC for literacy coaching in our elementary, and that has been hugely beneficial, again, as a main priority for us, especially in the elementary. And then these last two bullets, I kind of like to give a visual of burning a candle at both ends. We have to have on-grade-level standards instruction daily. And I think that's also a misnomer about virtual schools sometimes. I think people make the assumption that students are kind of just on their own and teachers are just there, you know, if they need assistance. But our teachers actually provide that tier-one on-grade-level instruction every single day. And so if we can provide the on-grade-level instruction and then also provide those focused skill sessions and tutoring to fill any gaps, we're closing a gap rather than just continuing to nurse a gap. And that's really our goal in making sure that our students are growing and achieving. It wouldn't be ARVA if I didn't share with you some of our innovations. We're very excited about the ARVA hub since I've been in front of the panel. We opened the hub in two thousand and twenty-three. I know some of the panel members have visited there for different events. If you haven't visited, I would invite you to come over, just any ill time. Go over to Seventh and State, and you'll find us, and you can walk right in and let the receptionist know who you are, and they'll let you just wander around. But I have a few pictures of some of the events in our open house. I like to highlight in the upper right-hand corner, this is our band. And yes, virtually, we have a band. So we really like to find a way to do the things that students need or are interested in. And so our students actually learn their pieces of music throughout the semester, and then they come together at the hub at the end of the semester, and they have a clinic day where the band director works with them, and then they host a concert that afternoon. So it's really been just really unique and interesting to see how our staff has figured out a way to find the opportunity to meet students' needs and to keep them interested in what they love. A couple of years ago, the panel also approved for us to pilot a hybrid campus in Spartman. Spartman's an area that had lost their school. They did retain their building for a community organization. And so we actually provide in-person instruction four days a week in Spartman. This is in cooperation with a local community organization. We have ARVA teachers there on staff, and it's been such a great opportunity to just really build into this community. And these are our very first two seniors from Spartman. They graduated this last weekend. So we've learned a lot about that hybrid opportunity between virtual and in-person, and we hope that it's an opportunity for us to be able to help other students in small and rural schools in the future for certain. So for your consideration, we would request to move our cap from fifty-five hundred to seven thousand. I've provided some enrollment data for you. We do typically take on a pretty decent enrollment increase from July to May. So you can see there that I've given you the July enrollment for the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five school years, the highest enrollment that we reached throughout that year, and then what that total number increase was from that low point to the high point within that fifth school or school year. Why is this important? So we were on waitlist during the middle of the year this year, and we do have so many students that come to us. I get phone calls, my student's been expelled, or my student has a medical emergency, or my student's experiencing trauma, whether it be bullying or extreme anxiety in their school, and I need someplace for them now. To have to tell those families that we have a waitlist, and they're going to have to wait for their place in line before I can help them solve their problem is, is very heartbreaking. So you can see the increase on the right over the past three years. And then the data below is, shows you our currently re-registered families that have confirmed the pending re-registrations. It's actually a little lower than that now from when I made the deck. It's just a little, little under a thousand. We've already have students requesting, new students requesting registration for fall. So doing just quick math, our potential July enrollment would be our highest starting enrollment at forty-eight oh eight, which would really only give us about six hundred and ninety-two seats to be able to grow and seat students throughout the year. And we can see from the last two years that the interest has exceeded those pieces. One question I get when I throw this, when I put this data up is people say, well, schools have actually been having trouble. Like, a lot of schools aren't growing right now. What is, what is sort of your secret sauce? And I wish I had a super distinct answer to that, but I think in looking at the academic gains that I showed on the academic slide, and then also laying aside that championing, championing our capturing students' hearts, the fact that we've been that national showcase school for the last two years when we've had the largest growth, I think that speaks volumes to how we're relating to families and to students and creating a safe place for them to come and to grow and excel academically. So, so that's just raw data. That's sort of the, it is what it is piece of the ask. And then just finally, I very rarely appear in front of this panel without including this slide, and so I didn't want to, didn't want to break my record. But I think there's a lot of ways in virtual schooling where you can just choose the easy path and enroll a student and, you know, kind of hope it all works out. But one of our mantras at ARVA is that we're not really interested in what's easy. We're very, very interested in what's right for students. And my staff, myself, are very passionate about finding a way to meet students' needs. And we're blessed virtually to be able to pivot and do that in a lot of variety of situations. So with that, I'll not take up any more time, but I'm happy to answer questions.
So at this point, Ms. Brown, do you mind coming forward to let us know if there's any legal concerns about this request?
Good morning again. Labria Brown, Staff Attorney for the Department. Legal does not have any concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Bye. Okay. I was trying to get in the Zoom so I could actually see. I was trying to join Zoom. There you go. Okay, thanks. Pretty good. Dr. Bashir Duncan, do you have any questions for the?
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Bashir Duncan here, Office of Innovation from the University of Arkansas. I do have a question. If I first might offer, Amy, hearing ARVA's origin story in current context and data and how you're serving kids, your community of serving kids is such an inspiration. I've learned so much from listening to you this morning. I'm wondering if you could speak to some ways that you work with families and communities and how that might be contributing to your growth?
Absolutely. It's such a great question. So we actually have a team that we call Regional Community Coordinators. It's a mouthful. We call them RCCs. Nobody has time to say that. But they are actually assigned different geographical areas of the state. And within that state, they are working on, just as your question suggests, community building. So they're hosting activities. They're available for families if they're having a struggle with technology or, you know, any of the many pieces that could be so difficult in coming to an online environment. Our main structure for our activities, we provide academic days where our students get together to do things that maybe are a little more difficult to do virtually. I mean, imagine, you know, trying to, to build a volcano or, you know, some of those experiences that we all tie to our academic experiences growing up. Some of those pieces are more just impactful if they're hands-on. So we do host academic days. We host adventure days because, listen, everybody needs a field trip, right? So our students have the ability to connect to each other through play, and that can be things from like, you know, urban air-type experiences or picnics at the park. We host a back-to-school picnic for all of our school, all of our students around the state. And then we also have a day where we have students come out and serve their communities. So we'll host several of those a day, or a year, rather, and they'll go volunteer at a local food bank and, you know, sort food and provide inventory services, or maybe they're working at a local shelter or a local library. So our RCCs orchestrate all of those activities, and those are typically sort of drop everything and be active days for our students. So we make it very optimal for them to be able to do that and go. And then we also recognize that 57% of our students that are for reduced lunch, and so they can't always travel, they can't always go. So we provide some opportunities online for them to be able to connect with fellow students. We have what's called an LCC community, which is a little Facebook-like, but it's an opportunity for parents to connect with each other. They can see who the learning coaches are in their area, if they want to connect with another learning coach that might be able to, you know, provide some support if they're struggling. And then we also have a, what we call the K-12 Zone, and it, it's hard, it's a little hard to explain because it's a virtual school within a virtual school, but it is a, sort of a virtual opportunity for students to go in. They create a little avatar, and online, there's like school buildings and a library and a cafeteria and a playground. And when they connect and come close in proximity with another student, their cameras pop up so that they can see each other and have an actual conversation. So we have a lot of different ways that we provide connection opportunities, but then also from a support standpoint, you know, those same RCCs are connected with and running in some cases. In Northwest Arkansas, we run our own food bank. So we keep opportunities for our students to have access to food sources if they need it. Those RCCs stay connected also with local agencies that may be able to help with internet connectivity, or if they just have, you know, those basic needs that we need to connect them with those local resources.
Thank you so much. I look forward to visiting in Little Rock and getting to know more about you all. Thank you for responding.
You're so welcome. You're welcome anytime.
Dr. Bacon?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I think I'm going to keep mine kind of quick. The only thing I'm really interested in is, I appreciate the transparency on some of the struggles academically in the past with the letter grades, and applaud the improvements. It sounds like those have been really successful. And I'd like to know, other than the fact that it's a new test, a new atlas, what would you attribute your improvements to, and how do you see those being sustainable moving forward?
It's a great question. So we've put into place a set of processes that we all hold each other accountable to. One of those processes is engagement and family service. What does that look like? How do we make sure that happens consistently? But probably the largest process is our instructional process. And it entails and outlines what we expect in every single classroom, how we're going to hold the teachers accountable, how we're going to hold ourselves accountable. And we've really just created a culture of accountability and transparency. One of my favorite things, Dr. Bacon, to your point, was a piece of feedback we got from a teacher that said that they felt so supported and that it was a safe place to try something that would impact students and not be afraid that if that failed, that there was some sort of gotcha or retribution, but that it would be a conversation of what worked and what didn't work, and how do we sort of massage or manipulate that for better student outcomes. So I think we've done a really good job. And listen, it sounds, it sounds so simple, but it's such hard work to really have that kind of transparency in those relationships to be able to have those conversations. But I think the, outside of those factors that, that you listed, I think that clarity of expectation, the goal that we're going for, we are hands-down working towards a minimum of a B for all three of our schools. We have a kind of a silly little slogan within our school that has the letter B in it. Everybody knows that's our goal. So there's just a real consistency from the top down, and we're hearing that in our feedback, that our teachers are feeling that. Our next step in that is, we're going to start to work with our students on learner dispositions. What does a good learner look like? How is a learner different, a good learner different than a good student? Because those are two very different things. And so we will launch that work in the fall, where we can really communicate with our students about their own dispositions and attributes and how that leads to their success. So kind of pulling that full circle, that we have the instruction and the clarity in our staff and our leadership teams, making sure that we're taking that clarity to our students and their families as well. But I really think that's been the biggest turning point, was just sort of this all-in effort and clarity on what we're looking for. And the earnest and honest conversations when we don't get it, I think, have really been a huge growth factor for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Stewart?
Yes, so as a new panel member, I really appreciated your background and sharing all of that information. You know, like Crystal mentioned, I'm super excited to have the chance to come out and see the ARVA Hub in particular. Just a quick question regarding, well, two questions, actually. So with increased enrollment, what does that look like from a staffing perspective?
Yeah, it looks like some hiring. So we'll keep our same structure and student ratio, so that's one of the reasons why it was really important for us to go ahead and try to get in front of the panel now, because it will require us some, some hiring over the summer. One of the beautiful things about virtual is that we can hire as we grow. It's not always ideal, because, you know, as the school world goes, the time clock and the signing of contracts and those sort of things. But we do have processes in place to onboard staff, even mid-year if we have to, which I think, in all honesty, all schools should have, because you never really know what's going to happen and, you know, what you're going to have to put in place. So yeah, so we'll get to work with hiring, and I don't have all the forecasts to give you a particular number yet as to how many for sure we'll hire, we'll forecast to what we think we'll have in that July to October, which is our largest growth sort of window in the year, to make sure that we can handle those students. And then, you know, we'll kind of go from there. But definitely hiring, definitely lots of new teacher training. One of the things that happens with all of our Visible Learning training too is, now you have a new teacher that hasn't had all of that progressive training. So not only do we have to onboard them to the virtual world, which can be, you know, sort of overwhelming in and of itself, but we also have to think about, okay, how do we bring them up to speed on where their peers are to make sure that every student is getting the same, you know, level of excellence? So we have processes and pieces laid out for that. I say all the time, sometimes people say, well, gosh, that's a lot of kids to take on. But then I say, well, we took on about that many kids in 30 days during COVID. So I feel like we've sort of, we've sort of weathered the, you know, the flood, and so now as they come in, I think we're very systematic about how we do that because of the pieces that we had to put in place at that time.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes perfect sense. So kind of along those lines, when you talked about, you know, the supports that you provide and things like that, how does that work from, you know, the perspective of special education, ELL, guidance, counseling for 9 through 12, that kind of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have counselor, elementary, middle, and high school. We actually have a team of six or seven counselors at the high school. So they provide all the typical counseling services that you would see in a typical brick-and-mortar. Special education, very, very similar. We have a whole team of special education teachers, a special programs manager that oversees all of the IEPs and the minutes and making sure that all that is aligned. We do provide related services. People always ask, well, how do you do speech and, and physical therapy and all those things virtually? There are some of those that we can do virtually, obviously, physical therapy, kind of need to be in person for that. So we work in, with providers all over the state. And if a student needs to have an in-person therapy or support, then we schedule that and they go, and, and we coordinate all of that for them. If it can be done virtually, then we try to do it virtually, of course, just because it's easier on the families. So all that's provided. We have an EL coordinator who oversees all of our EL population, all of our testing and our interventions and support there. Same with dyslexia. We have a pretty decent dyslexia population. We have three different dyslexia interventionists and then a dyslexia coordinator that helps us oversee the supports that they need. So it's a pretty intricate system when you start to pull apart all the pieces, but ultimately, I try to tell people, almost anything that you see a brick-and-mortar school doing, we've figured out a way to do it within our virtual model.
Thank you. I appreciate you indulging me too and kind of educating me on, on how you're doing things. And quick kudos to you for the letter grade jumps.
Thank you.
Great work there by your team.
Thank you.
Well, you know, we're very familiar with ARVA, and so in CTE, we are always thankful for the partnerships that we have in multiple areas with you, and you have a wonderful facility. And I know that, was it the kindergarten graduation?
Yes, kindergarten graduation was there Monday. Yes, yes.
So, so yeah, so you guys are doing some great things. Only thing that I would like for you just to speak to a little bit more is, how have you guys been able to manage offering CTE virtually?
Oh, my goodness. This is like one of my favorite things to talk about, so I'm glad you asked. So CTE really is, in a lot of ways, sort of a dream to be able to offer virtually, because we can, especially for like the Level One courses and getting students really interested, because we can offer a variety of courses, really a large battery of courses that most districts would struggle to be able to staff. We can, we can do that. Now, as far as all the other great stuff that comes with CTE, we have student organizations. I always like to brag that we have an FFA, which everybody's always sort of a little astounded by, but we were actually the first virtual FFA chapter in the country. And the FFA competes, and, you know, they do all those pieces. We do FBLA. Gosh, I'm going to forget one if I try to, if I try to name all. Skills USA. We just added virtual welding, which I don't know if you know that that's a thing. I didn't. But it uses virtual reality and some implements, and it's amazing what students can do virtually to learn those, those base, you know, welding skills. But we also do a lot of partnerships for internships, opportunities for students to get on-the-job training. We, we know our population, and we know that we have a small population that's college-bound, and we have a pretty large population that's career-bound. They need to be job-ready. And so, you know, we really work to make sure that students have job-ready skills. Our students are really strong in Microsoft certifications, Adobe certifications. We have, we do several different things with Skills USA and TSA, and like I said, I'm going to forget something, but we have a fantastic CTE administrator, and that's what she does. She connects students. We have a student that just finished their internship with Daily Electric, and so he's going to be job-ready as an electrician when he graduates. So we're constantly looking. When I say, find a need, make a way, we really mean that, and that doesn't stop short of our CTE. So opportunities for students to come into the hub, meet with their organizations. We run an EAST program out of our hub. I think we were the first virtual EAST program as well. And so our students come in and get to work with the technology there. So just, I mean, that's like totally 30,000-foot view, because there's so much that happens with our CTE courses. But our students are very, very active, and moving it down into middle school has really been an exciting opportunity, because we're starting to offer Skills USA in the middle school and some pieces like that to sort of create that bridge into the high school to really ensure that students are connected and have that, that job-ready opportunity. So I'm sure I'm forgetting something.
You're fine, you're fine. Just, again, just thank you for your focus on CTE as well and understanding the importance that all of our students, regardless of their learning methods, need to be exposed to it as well.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. So are there any other questions from any panel members?
Dr. Duncan, I have no further questions. Thank you, Dr. McMurray.
Okay. Make sure. Any questions? Okay, okay. So I think we're good. So if there are no further questions, then I'll accept a motion on the request of Arkansas Virtual Academy to increase their enrollment from 5,500 to 7,000.
I move that we accept that, except from 5,500 to 7,000 increase in cap for ARVA's enrollment.
I second that, Dr. Duncan.
Okay. So I have a motion by Ms. Stewart, a second by Dr. Duncan. All those in favor, can you say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Very good. Okay, motion passes. Okay, give us just a second to go to our voting sheets.
I, no, no, you're fine. I motion to approve the enrollment cap. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Bacon?
I voted to approve the amendment request. I think that we heard a thoughtful consideration of how students can be engaged in academic progress in a virtual setting, and I applaud the school for improving academic performance.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
I vote to approve the increased enrollment count, cap for Arva from 5,500 to 7,000 in order to better serve communities across the state.
Okay.
And then I voted for, I support the amendment request by Arkansas Virtual Academy charter to increase their enrollment cap from 5,500 to 7,000. The increase will allow them to serve more students, which will increase opportunities for students to pursue their education and career goals through a virtual environment that has positive established outcomes.
Right. Thank you. So with that, I don't think we have any further business that we need to entertain, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Stewart, a second by Dr. Duncan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. All right. I have it.